The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Phil here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Welcome, everybody.
Trying to turn this down.
I figured I was blowing people out of the water.
Not until we after we first, second, and then we then we can have discussion.
This asset we pulled 6.2 and 6.3 from the consent that we did for early discussion.
Amanda, can you say something, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm just trying to get the lower.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if I was successful.
Is that better?
So loud.
You can just ask for clarification, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
You can learn more about it. Is that what you're just wanting to know?
Uh, yes, and if I, I mean, I'm I'm trying to vote different on one of on those and the others, I guess, as well.
Yeah, so you can go.
I don't want to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is just, I think we're ready to approve it, and then we will have discussion.
Okay.
We vote on consent.
Sure.
Okay, Ken Evans.
Hi.
Ellie Fisher.
Hi.
Brenda Johnson.
Hi.
Nick Nelson.
Hi.
And Lucy Sutcliffe.
Hi.
For working on the community school presentations, the package in line, we do a meeting for me to comply to the board.
Look, sure.
So if you look through the, in your packet, that is a reform compliance of public school standards, which is required by the state. This will also be posted on our school district's website, and it's being compliance with the state as expectations. Are you here? Yes.
Yeah, like I was told, comment, I didn't find any done sign up for public comments. Okay, so 6.0 is our consent agenda. So 6.11 minutes, December 2025, is attached with 6.1. When we talk to the recommendation, this is the recommendation approved, Superintendent McCarland head and principal, Reverend Franklin, who attended 2025. Organists will not conflict between the four events on December 3rd, 2025. 6.3 is recommendation to approve Superintendent McCarland head and name of the work to attend the ACD. He career technician, 2025, the national Tennessee. This is paid for by regional CTE funds, not district funds. 6.4, recommendation approved field trip request for Oregon at the state convention in Redmond, Oregon. And 6.5 is recommendation to approve field trip request, national revenue to then to. And maybe else. So we have to get a motion secondary discussion.
Yep.
I can get an in motion?
I motion to approve 6.0 consent agenda.
Okay.
So I guess a couple of questions. Who are the dates of a national trip?
The national trip, I apologize, I can't recall. I can't remember right off the top of my head. It's in December. It is December 8th through the 11th.
Then can those funds be used for the regional CTE funds? Do they have to be for that, or can they be used for something else?
We don't get to allocate those.
Okay.
We have no control over those.
So if we use them as a safe for that?
Yes. We don't get to allocate them at all. Those are allocated through John Strupe, who is the new director. And that's allocated through, not through us at all. And so and Daniel Daniel Boland was awarded from teacher of the year award, and so that's part of why he gets to go. Of course, he's also already in a rotation to go because different teachers throughout the region get to go to national CTE events. So he would have been in the rotation to go, and then he got recognized now for a teacher of the year award. So he gets presented as a award down there. And then last year, I was offered to go to the the national CTE conference. I was not able to go last year. And before I came here, I was an ACTV fellows. And so they support our CTE things. We're gendered, basically. Thank you, Beth. And so they were able to allow me to go this year, and it's great because then I can see extra bone and get some support as well.
But the, so my main concern is having with some of our previous discussions, having both of our principals be on for a week, and then the following week having another principal go on. I guess that's my concern with everything that has to be done here.
Right.
Because the district handled that.
So the nice thing is, is that Mr. Franklin will not be gone to the ACTV conference.
Right.
He'll be back to be home for the 3rd of the, yes, correct, and he'll be back. Yeah. Yeah, what, and do they even fall Monday?
The ones getting certified, so it's one, two, these two.
Yeah.
I strongly, I mean, both Charlotte and Roger are thinking that we're in law school. The progress, I think that one is.
I think this year is important. It's when all the new agents coming up and order law is is ready to navigate. I think it's essential that our administrators attend that one, make you kind of.
Last year, that was probably the most high opening thing for professional development that I went to is a lot of those. And actually, right now, that's tied to the law class that they're taking. So.
I think that's.
Roll call, Will.
Hey, kid.
Hi, Ellie.
I'm Brenda.
Hi.
Nick.
No.
Lacy.
Hi.
But completely no action discussion. 721 recommendation of option of the open school search, one of the other makes protocol. Can I motion to be exact as well?
That's good.
I motion adopt the open school district board, whoever gets first one. All second.
Yeah.
Hi.
I'm Brenda.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
Lacy.
Hi.
And 7.2, recommendations approved superintendent evaluation process with Missy work. Um, we'll go ahead and have, we'll get a motion secondary discussion. All in motion?
All second.
Um, I would like to talk, I really liked the platform that we used last year, and now I, I thought it was, it was a really great way to, like, we are super in it, and everything start thinking about that because this December, this same weekend, we know that. I would, would we be doing the exact same, we, I guess, I don't feel like we need Missy to the level that we utilized her last year because we have that right about, so if I'd like to scale down on how much we do, I still will missy during that, I would still think we could do that on our own week pretty well.
And yeah.
Honestly, my opinion, I, I love, I missy, she's amazing. She's incredible. But with the way she set us up, I feel like we don't need her to do the evaluation. That's just my opinion.
Or can we just use her as a reference, like, we go through, we can use the, we need her to help us kind of guide. Maybe.
I think that, I think that you can do it, you can use her service as much as long as you need to. And I think that she's open to that.
Okay.
So there's options.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
That's a great question.
Yes, she was a carlistian, signed through her, and she's continued to be her midwife.
And she was superintendent for so?
Yes, she was a superintendent until recently, and now she works for a regional, it's like an IMESD, but it's not IMESD. It's like one over on the coast side. But she's been a survivor since there again.
She's been fine. She also put together our, helped us with our four members.
I see.
So we can discuss with her what level we would like her to say.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Hi.
I'm Brenda.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
Lacy.
Hi.
Uh, information directors question. 8.1 is adding reports in, I'd like to record, we should use that. You want? Did you have, did you want to? Um. Just with the sports. Um, the volleyball team. Uh, come in fourth. Uh, finish districts, fourth place and that, and finish winning at the moment, so they were able to get a spot in the brackets. And so we'll play Wednesday at 6:00 PM at Prairie State. And then we, we have returned to winning, having done it, not even Saturday. And that's also to be determined, where depending on all the rest of the things play out. So.
Yeah.
And then, I think this one here about basketball is going now.
How are you getting that when we write that for you? So, yeah.
Um, Andy, do we have Miss Russell's schedule there?
We do. We do, actually. And that will, we will put those out at the end of this week. I was just finalizing one last confirming that we weren't even through. Um, we get that again. So, yeah.
Hey, Reverend Franklin.
Oh. That's very weird. Thank you. Wow, you're gonna be supporting everybody. Um, uh. Thank you this evening. Board superintendent, our N10 or Rowan Wentz from 175, I mean, 180 to 175. You can read, uh, for the kids, where I went, window, I line, 311 at home, 2 transfers around Baker. Then we had our 11th grade in row. Also, we had a school, uh, uh, 10th grade was office was basically 94%. Then dropped down to 92.7% due to about four kids. Tittering, we have been, uh, working with our parents, calling them, trying to get them in. Then we, we just had some basic 10-day drop in every, every, I think, like, that happened. Then we are still constantly working with those parents. So, I mean, we are doing everything we can. Um, two, school updates. I, uh, we're testing down. We have 15 more students left. We are getting through that slowly, but it's a churning thing for if we get all the diet on the NASA testing happen. Number three, safety and civil. We are constantly, I mean, you know, I'm talking about constantly, but consistently uh, working with our kids, teaching them the expectation, bringing all the staff and your kids to our gather to have a culture of climate, but are much more positive, constantly all the time by saying that is we are trying to be a school led by our students. That is their job. Meaning, I know, showing how to help, help each other, then on time for classes, don't provide, getting their Chromebooks, don't provide, getting a lunch money. Don't just don't forget that. But, you know, we are human. And, uh, and then, and the parents have helped us, um, kind of continue to get their kids to school on time. But also, we, we, um, we, uh, vision manager kids to, um, listen in our class. And then I will get to that, uh, part soon. Um, we are constantly, I usually, um, taking a model for our group work to make sure our kids is in a, gauge in their higher of learning. We just see the test with, I know, adjustments for, uh, staff, and we are kind of continue to see some lack of, uh, genetic success. But, but that, uh, model is, uh, gonna, I take a whole, uh, year because we are also trying to give rest for state testing too. So we are trying to focus on two, uh, thing at, uh, once. But by, uh, usually, uh, taking a model, we are having our, uh, kids teaching each kid uh, 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 different, different, I don't know, different methods of, like, I can, I didn't record success, but, but also two things goes on. Listen, we have to listen to the teachers. And then give feedback to the teachers of, hey, Ms. Johnson, what did I just say? You're like, I don't know what, I don't know nothing yet. Now, this is what I said, I missed it, Nick. So I read, Peter, so I working mad, reading, uh, writing all to our, so I, either like, uh, eating a bowl of soul food, each and every single day. Okay? But facilities, we, uh, just had our, um, fire drill that, uh, went well. Number five, activities in the events, we, Mr. Warren took our 14 kids to the conference, and the grant, and I did well. Um, staff, and I miss, uh, Zink, uh, uh, no, helped, I got a 78 grade to tell, like, unit counter safety, come, come, music core, listen. If I, you don't know, uh, but it is basically, it is, uh, all about life as kids. And now it is even talking more, uh, uh, about safety on the internet, where you should not be going. That's what our parents are, no, even on your phones and all of that, trying to keep our kids safe. Because we don't know what's out there. Also, yours, yourself safe too. Uh, that's if they drive through barbecue, tasty, tasty, $15 worth of nothing. Uh, he had a long line, and the kids done wonderful. Oh, my God, oh, thank you. We got great kids, really do. So thank you, uh, kids and, uh, parents. Working, we will be working, uh, with, uh, this chamber of, uh, Belgian, come, must have a win contest. Be nice for identity, honestly, it's in the next two or three days. I will, uh, be in the judging, being just all over there. But I will call your mama, Ms. Johnson, I will call. I'll play it perfect. Open. Each way, they were made, uh, stir, uh, crows for contest, and they, uh, stepped it out there. So, uh, like I said, number six, Oregon state test, and I'm, uh, we are really know our big about that because our, uh, kids is at these, uh, level, you know, we gotta get our, our kids out the park. Just sorry to say that, if you look at our state testing data, you are under our sin. We have kids who's capable of being there. So we are really setting high, uh, marks with our staff for their end, not scarfing your time, but you can't teach late kids, and you can't teach an empty seat. And you can't teach tired and sleepy kids in the home kids. So we're, we are, uh, using manual height, our D of a knee to, uh, make sure that we are turn on batting all the field, constantly calling parents. This is why I like number seven. So if you see the breakdown in, this is just for September. So, uh, this is what we do. This is this is why you hired us. Okay, communication transparency with, uh, parents in the, um, in the township. Uh, students' office, we've, uh, furthest 53 days past month. We call home 27 times. We repeatedly took certain houses 11 times. We repeatedly to send certain houses next time. Okay, it's, uh, certain kids. Okay, today. And I ain't gonna do one name, but just to just saying, parents in the office of 18. Same parents in the office of nine. See my point here? And we, yeah. I can't say, I can't say. Uh, and the, we repeated twice, it's seven, uh, seven of those parents in that same month because of certain ish, ish, issues going on. Most of the time, they just like to talk. And to figure out how we, we can best help their child or their children or themselves. I mean, that's what it's about. Safety and civil is about being a anchors in the community to, I know, I watch it, uh, grow. Our kids is helping their parents become responsible too. So, um, by saying, the saying that is, we had, uh, not, not many three in our schools, uh, Spencer won on was our repeat. Uh, and then that's where he comes in of, uh, we are sort of justice that we are talking about. That is where we are getting, uh, his, uh, step up. Uh, working well with our superintendent, we are sending our kids over to the kitchen to clean. We are also having kids, uh, working with me, cleaning, sweeping floors, washing our windows, have to be talked to their parents. And the parents won't want that to happen because no parent won't want their kid at home. Because honestly, what they gotta do. So they, they do their job, but they also still have a class time. So, I mean, I, I mean, just while working and just, uh, doing nothing else. So we also got to make sure that they understand our school guidelines, our expectations, but also we have our, our school handbook that we have to follow. And then superintendent, you know, he and I taught a lot. We, we, you know, if, if, if I would have put her phone calls on here, it would be probably 100 again all week. Now, if there's, that's gotta be honest with you. Uh, we are, we are, no, we are, no, sort of, justice works for, um, certain kids. It, it, it is a work. But what I know works the, uh, most is, uh, health. Notice that in their parents. And, and, and the parents, it all, all the time. And two, uh, we don't just call, once we, uh, call, we are, we are this is the, what we say, parents, we, uh, need to help. Because that way, we, where the door is open, and so they can assure, uh, these. We, uh, so I, by, uh, by also listening to them walking into their shoes, we understand at the same time. I mean, you have to have a heart somewhere. Um, visiting parents, this is my favorite on here. Number G, visiting parent at school curbs like, I mean, you get a lot. I mean, it, I mean, it helps. Sometimes I get the coffee, don't rest too, but that's good. But it's, it's, it's just, just, just those quick conversations. And the kid sees you talking, they're going, no, come over, let's just get it quickly. And then it's a, and it's a correctus. Um. It's a corrective, um, positive interaction. So by, uh, doing that, we, we have 181 kids. Think about all those, uh, kids I haven't even put down, they're just, uh, when I come see mom, dad, grandma, uh, but this is what's, uh, please stop them. Okay, book, we're done. I don't have to go into a whole, uh, level. Uh, unless it's a renovation, okay? Um. Uh, age, oh, yeah, age is parents calling in for help. We had done, uh, this past month, 11 of them called. Four of them called, called, uh, back. They just needed more, more help. Parents are starting to feel comfortable calling the school now because we are reaching out. This, uh, what y'all, uh, want, want it to happen. So it's gonna take time for, for the other 1700 to call in, but, uh, we are there. So it's, yeah, it's, uh, working. But, you know, here is the other good part. Dad's visiting the office. Me, me, eight dads sitting there. And, and, and it's like, someone comes off, Russ, I ain't gonna lie, Russ, let me just really but by the end of the conversation, it's like, yeah, brothers in arms. And they're, and, and they, and, and, and it's, and it's not threatening. It's listening. And say, no, help each other. And, 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 no, they got kids in our sports. And, and, and sometimes we don't know their stories, but at the same time, here is our story as a healthy. So we, everybody got to be held accountable, but we are doing in a patient, tough, lovely. So, and, 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 and now, now I got a I got five, uh, dads, we're close. I'm like, wow, we're close. How many, you know, we're close. Sorry. Uh, visiting class roof 19 times to, I get our kids, certain kids out, eight, and I went back, uh, there, eight, eight, we repeated, uh, certain classroom eight times, five times, you know, again, using city civil, uh, model. That is saying, walking in, demo, I know, screening the expectations of our city there, listening. Teachers and, uh, structure, model, 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 having the kids model for the whole class. So we kind of tend to do that. And the last one is, is, uh, okay, none, just very conversational with, uh, student, checking in with every student every day. Every single day, two or three times, they, uh, they all month long. So, there you go.
Oh, I skipped a minute, sorry. Eight months, I wasn't doing that on purpose, man. Eight months to find out the report and get the luck.
You just didn't wanna hear me all night long if this is too loud, right? Okay, so, uh, we did have a bunch of movement happening in September. Um, property taxes came in about $2,700. We'll see that start to increase quite significantly as people start paying their property taxes in the next couple of weeks. Um, interest came in about $4,000, our basic school support payment, which is, uh, our state school fund from Oregon Department of Education of about $387,000. And then we brought in close to $2,000 in gate receipts and pay play. Um, some larger things that happened in special revenue funds, preschool tuition came in about $1,200. We did see the CTE revitalization grant, which reimbursed us for a bunch of materials that we purchased last year of about 200, of $250,000. Great. And that we had food service, not floor service. Um, and that we had food service, not floor service, about twenty-three thousand dollars as well. Um, Kylie and her crew were in the building the other week. They were not able to fully finish up. Um, but they'll be back in this week uh, in our building to finish up the twenty-four, twenty-five financial audit. And then we should hopefully have that presented to you guys in December. Um, there were quite a few checks that went out the door in September, and those are really a lot of startup checks on getting licensing software, curriculum. Things like that out the door. So we had a sell us, which are student licenses, receipt licenses. Uh, there was a bunch of supplies being purchased from Amazon. Amplify is Dibbles, which is a uh, testing software. Um, I'm, hopefully I don't butcher this, but Encore Publishing. Uh, did some curriculum as well on behavior management. We got uh, some maintenance supplies with Home Depot. There were a couple of rooms that had been floored, so we purchased those supplies. Uh, you can kind of read through here more curriculum with, uh, curriculum associates with I ready. We did pay for the blueprints for the barn project. That comes out of a CTE grant that does not touch the general fund goal. Annual bus inspections, some active panels, which are those uh, big touchscreens in classrooms. The board governance, um, consultants that I believe you guys just adopted or approved. Uh, we paid for the annual lifelight, um, policy. And then a bunch of other curriculum as well as officials are being paid for as well. Uh, if you kind of move through this financial report, uh, page two kind of gets to our expenditures quite a bit. Uh, we did run the first payroll, so staff are loaded up in there. Um, and then we kind of project expenditures and other functions as well. Um, you can kind of see where we did some administrative movement uh, in the high school and the elementary school that we see a negative free balance in those. Um, principal columns, and that's fine. Um, as long as they kind of net close out in that two thousands to zero, which it looks like they are. And then it looks like with our movement from high school and elementary, we just need to do some funding corrections on staff to make that whole. Uh, but overall, in that middle section there, you'll see that we're still staying above uh, our appropriations that we did during budget. So everything is good there. Um, if you move to the fourth page, you'll see uh, July, August and September, do you have actuals in there for revenue and expenses? Um, so you'll see kind of in that bottom section, we have the summer months of payroll at the fifty-three thousand and fifty-two thousand, and then you'll see all the staff come on board at two sixty-one there. The rest of the year is just projected out. Um, so we'll true those up as they start coming in. Um, and then make some corrections as we uh, see changes. Do you guys have any questions or comments for me?
So, we've been in the plant, we have all this little late time enrollment, it's two hundred and two for kids six, I think maybe we have twelve students. Well, a few things that are not on the recorder. Um, we've been noticing a number of tardies from breakfast and some things that with staff. And I discussed last Friday is that students that are at, that wander down into the breakfast area after about seven fifty. Are going to be given basically a grab and go breakfast to get to class. That way we're, we're trying to diminish the number of tardies also. We'll absolutely be able to feed them, but not like, hey, let's get to seven fifty-eight and, you know, sit down with socializing with friends, then we show up for the class. If they can, they can help reduce that. We also moved the staff number uh, down there that has client in first hour. So that way they can have, you know, hurry and create a sense of reducing for students to get to breakfast, get to first hour on time. Uh, we did purchase a new health curriculum for junior, senior high school. That way they have a current and approved health curriculum for the. On the Halloween carnival is on Friday, which is exciting and this is the ball and. Student probably do a great job hosting that every year. Um, the wrestling organization is done. Um, except that the roller derby came in damage, so they had to recover them unfortunately, but otherwise, um, it's, you know, the round was done. We're excited about that. Last thing that we want to add is something, I think the sign on the side says like Husky Wrestling and some, some boards that way we can recognize. Historical data of state, find this in state records and then we play things, but we want to just input on that. Um, parent teacher promises are this week, so Wednesday is an early release day for students. And then we have conferences one to seven, and then Thursday, there's no school for students, and then conferences are eight to noon for staff. Husky humanitarian awards at the elementary. Past few weeks, we've had elementary students that have been selected by the teacher of state to go to bird dog class. And then after lunch with their teachers for recognition within their classroom was selected by them. And then that would continue throughout the year. And so both last two is what the focus is and, um, with them, we're also recognizing student of the month. And then, um, you know, we have some training coming up for admin and for Alice training. We sent one teacher to Crisis Preventive, Preventative In- Institute for de-escalation training. And then we hosted our Title One Fireman reading night last weekend. It was, it was great success. And we're thankful for the HLG Department for volunteering to come and read to our heroes and provide some training. We'd also check the VOT boards for the federal mandates of for Title One. So that was great too. Um, we continue work on revising the policy and emergency response plan for district. And parents were to catch you toward, bill lists their wallet out to the family very soon, because all having fully implemented, fully implemented in operation by the member.
Uh, any question, it's first reading is good for policy. Anybody want to read here? Sorry, you have lots of good sound.
All right, so we had uh, we brought the PSAT, MPSAT, this uh, month. Out of third juniors, we had twenty-four that took it. Um, the SAT for seniors out of twenty-nine, twenty-one took it. Um, it was really nice to see scratch paper that actually had numbers. So, we guys, we got seriously, some had them prepared, but, um. Usually we get blind sheets back, so it was nice to see that, you know, students actually worked out problems. Um, so we're going off the DSA again, um, in the spring for the seniors. And I'll be contacting the ACT to see if we can become a, an approved uh, testing sites. As if not, then we'll hopefully be able to talk and arrange testing, which is kind of like the day testing day, school day. The FPT. Nice. Um, so yeah, I may give us a two-week window also for that tonight. Um. Post-high graduation career awareness, we took uh. All but three freshmen and four juniors to the first annual trades talk and career walk on the fifteenth that evening at their grand reunion. And that was actually uh, really good. Um, like uh, the conference. Actually, activity that was happening, um, they had a huge drone uh, being operated. So the students like to see, and they talked to the young man, um, I think he was twenty-four. Was actually done, and I was talking about how at sixteen you get certified to actually fly these huge things. Um, and so they, they had the uh, the carpenter, carpenters union. Um, the line man, they had several dear friend, um. Professional, no, professional, but individuals there, um, that have set up booths to demonstrate and do hands-on activities with the students. So that was really good. And then they had the trades talk, where we talked to the different trades and schools also. We had some colleges that felt really good. The only thing was cold, it was only, um, but uh, one of the suggestions that we had was that it's something that we think would benefit our students if they offered it twice a year. So that the students can actually, um, those that can't make it in the spring can make it in the fall by the first half of the year. Uh, and we took freshmen, um, because they'll be taking the career awareness course next semester. And we're gonna start thinking about careers and which pathway they're gonna, you know, they, they, they prefer, they, is of interest to them. Um, met with Boise Cascade and Aaron Mall, and we're hopefully um, starting. Um, job shadowing program, um, to get the seniors. An easier way to get their, um, just job shadowing hours done. But also fit it up to juniors that may want to start going in a certain direction. And so, um, they'll be filling out a form that has that allows what are your HOP interests? Um, that you would like to job shadow, you know, go into. And Aaron Mall there, so we can go in her firm office, HR, clerical, to mil rights. Driving, so it's like the whole spectrum. Yes. So that would be nice. Um, and then we, Barbara, you know, from BMCC has made several uh, visits to meet with the seniors during the period. They'll be back again, um, on the thirteenth. We have Oregon Tech coming, EOU doing his on-the-spot admissions. Though he'll review, transfer to students that probably never send in a ten EOU and will uh, do the on-the-spot and accept them, then advance. Yeah. Yeah. And then Lewis and Clark will be coming out also, uh, somewhat doing the same thing, trying to do the same thing as EOU. See what interest that really is and kind of steering towards that direction. Um, and then as far as counseling, been meeting with students, but also, um, the freshman on track. Uh, we had sent out the survey last month. For parents and then one of the biggest, uh. What did I say, um. Suggestion that they had was the mode of communication, um. Was it?
Yeah, therefore, to freshman, we did our two surveys. One was in October and then, I mean, September, and then we just.
No, the first one was the most like, we asked them.
What they wanted.
What they wanted. Um, and one of the things that they said that they wanted better communication with the school. And so then we asked, how does that look? What do you want? Do you want text? Do you want email? Do you want a pigeon? Do you want signals? Like, what do you want? You have a little font, something here for. And so. Yeah, so what was it?
Eight point forty, what percent? Texting.
Yeah, texting. And so, um, so, you know, we wanted them to also know that we, we hear them, we, we actually are reading the surveys. Here, we want to, um, bridge that lack of communication that they feel. Um, so. So we're still working on getting something for everybody. Um, and then we mailed out lunch letters for attendance for students, so any student that had one, three absences. Um, it's just a lunch letter, these times, they're going to be used to the end of this three days, they're at such and such percent. Did you know that if your student keeps missing their tenth, um. Misses the school, their chances of falling behind and, um, behind the trend. So just kind of say to the law and kind of said, you know, if there's anything we can do, let us know. Um, the breakdown is there. We have a hundred and eighty-four students at the time we sent the letter out. Thirty-four letters for males, which is seventeen point five percent, and the breakdown there. Um, our A graders were the ones that had the most sense. Um, so. It's that. Uh, next, met with Charlotte Law with the Fairness of Florida. Um, and we, we, we were there once a month just to make sure that, um, any student that needs some additional resources. Or a type of assistance on us or help that we ensure that we connect that those students are that students. Uh, we don't want any of them falling between the cracks. Um. And then we visited Rising Star, the open house last week, um, just to see. To uh, see what resources are out there, what they offer, um, ask more about their program. Um, how they serve our students, um, what they offer. Um, so it was really good, and we had a raffle and we won. Yeah, so that was nice. And it's for, it's homecoming with a deeper fact, that all the activities were planned by ASBN, it's Caldwell, so a good shout out, there's a lot. Um, and then junior high volleyball and at North Powder. And football, and I could see them on Friday the seventeenth, the official though, the other day. Junior high officials, so our high school were officiating the junior high games. And they did a great job, and they also saved the district a lot. Um, so we're hoping to do the same thing with basketball. Um, and wrestling, we have a middle school wrestling here as well. Um, but it's, it's anybody that's ever been an official or has stepped in, know that it's, it's a tough job, you know? Yeah, so I'm suited at that. Uh, and then we're going to do volleyball already, cross country. We had one student, he did really good, he finished the, he started and finished the course. Um, so yes, he was really excited and happy, and so we, he stuck it out. Um, the rest of the students kind of quit along the way. But he stuck it out, and so we could see that, that we hadn't do that. Um, football, again, pipe law, last week we won, and then we'll have senior night Saturday. Is that one? It's at one. Okay. Yeah, it was changed to the official, you know, so we didn't have any.
Can we confirm when state's in golf? It's Wednesday, what time it is? Wednesday, when volleyball?
I believe it's at ten forty-five.
It's during win period.
Oh, yeah.
Ten forty-five till eleven.
Yeah, but they're not leaving town, I think we till two.
Okay, that's, I was confused with the, what I'm hearing, it's probably just another kind of wait, I thought, released with that seven forty-five, okay, got it.
And then, um, the basketball, junior high, AP, boys and girls will be at COVID on Friday and at La La on Saturday. And then the third team has been up and running, and that's been really awesome. Then we'll be able to use that also for, um, softball, baseball, so it's, that'll be good. And then the impact testing is up and running. Uh, we'll be doing that for all the winner, even sports. I mean, because every student has a baseline, so that we, if, in case there's, um, a concussion. Um, we always have a baseline to see where we were. Um, a concussion, um, the youngies have a baseline to see where we were, so that they can come back and, and be ready to play. Yeah.
How would they play, Joe?
It was awesome.
The wind and lawyers, yeah.
Yes, we had, um, the whole school go. Yes, yes, we had the whole school go, and and we played with exceptional, we are really, heavily on great, that and we. Kids was very respectful. I mean, these kids have came a long way, I'm just gonna understand. I'm a good tire, but you know, different one.
School district policy, uh, we need to be slash baby mom, this is a preparation, too.
So these were all, if you look at these, um, these were all originally. Um, basically two reports, we split them into. Um, I believe four reports, there's a student version, which is, oh, yes. It's a student version, and then an employee version now, um, and a difference between the incident and the accident. Um, so as we can take, what we need to do is set a work session for November seventeenth. Before, um, our next board meeting, please, so that way we will give you guys time to look from over, see what you think of them, maybe we. You know, come back to the work section as proposed provisions. I mean, I will also make sure that we send you the original, um, current board policies that we can look at those as well, to compare it to. Trying to make it to where it's more streamlined and user-friendly, but also, um. It makes the delineation between what they're looking at. And even those people up.
I will, uh, submit a decision. I'm gonna figure out the answer, but I'm not gonna be here. I have to be here next month, I'm really in first class. So, and all of your feelings on that.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, have a good night.